Everyone, we'd like to welcome you to the Fruta City Council Meeting. The time is now seven P M. We're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. Deb, would you please call roll?
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Perser. Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Cry.
Here.
Counsel Miller.
Here.
Counsel Hancy.
Here.
All right, we're gonna move into our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. If you'd please stand with me. We'd like to take this opportunity for a moment of silence to allow all faith and beliefs the opportunity for a silent prayer. Thank you. If you please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
No changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Cry.
Hi.
Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Counsel Hancy.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, we do not have any proclamations and presentations tonight, so we're gonna move into our public participation. Uh, so this time is set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. Generally, the city council will not take any action on these items. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on something that's not on the agenda, now would be your opportunity. All right, I'm hearing none here. Is there anybody online that would like to speak?
No comments online, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, we're gonna close public participation and move into our consent agenda. So our consent agenda, these items are, uh, were all conditions and requirements that have agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council. They'll all be approved by a single motion of the council. So with that, we're gonna open up our consent agenda to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on an item on consent agenda, now would be your opportunity. All right, I'm hearing none. Is there anybody online that would like to speak?
No comments online.
All right, with that, I'm gonna bring the consent agenda back to council. Are there any questions, comments on this?
I'm gonna recuse myself from point E.
All right. All right, any other comments or do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any other comments? All right, hearing none, would you please poll council?
Counsel, excuse me, Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Cry.
Hi.
Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Counsel Hancy.
Yes.
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, with that, we're gonna move into our public hearings. We've got two tonight. Uh, both of those are uh quasi judicial hearings. Um, and so the first one is a special event liquor permit application. Uh, it's a request to approve an application from the Fruta Arts and Culture Board to serve wine at the Coco Vino fundraiser. And we've got Deb Woods here from the city to present on this item.
Mr. Mayor, good evening, city council. Uh, for the record, Deb Woods, deputy city clerk, presenting the special event liquor permit application from the Fruta Arts and Culture Board. For the Coco Vino event to be held Friday, March tenth from three to ten P M. At the Our Lady of Perpetual Motion located at five oh three East Aspen. Uh, the Fruta Arts and Culture Board has requested to be able to serve wine at their fundraising event Coco Vino, the proceeds of which will benefit the board's projects. The diagram of the proposed license premises that was included in your council packet illustrates the area on the main floor where the wine will be served. IDs will be checked upon entry to the event, and it is an adult only event. Participants will be limited to two glasses of wine each. Event volunteers will monitor the front door, which will provide the entrance and exit to the building, the, the only entrance and exit. But there is an additional emergency exit located at the rear of the building. Um, they will be monitoring the, the attendees to ensure that no alcohol enters or leaves the area. And signage will be posted at that entrance and exit that says no alcohol may be taken outside of the building. Through the chief of police, Dave Kraus reviewed the Arts and Culture Board's application and issued his statement that there is nothing which would prevent the issuance of the license being requested. So it is staff's recommendation to the city council that the application for the special event liquor permit be approved subject to the following three conditions. One, the entrance and exit shall be monitored closely and continuously by event staff in order to prevent alcoholic beverages from going into or out of the licensed area. Two, the licensee needs to be aware that they are solely responsible for control of the licensed premises in regards to alcohol possession, consumption, and adherence to state and municipal laws. And three, all other procedures presented by the Fruta Arts and Culture Board will be followed. Uh, that concludes my presentation, and Nancy Patterson is the chair of the Arts and Culture Board, and she's present this evening as the applicant's representative. So I will turn it over to Nancy for any additional comments she may have.
Hello. Thank you, Deb. That was covered pretty much everything. Do you have any questions for me this evening?
We'll do that after we open it up for public comment.
How about that?
You wanna add anything else now?
I think it's largely covered. Um, it's a fundraiser specifically for the Heart of Fruta rotating art sculpture program, which we hope to enact in the fall. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
All right, with that, we're gonna open it up to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item now is you, would be your opportunity. All right, hearing none. Uh, Sierra, is there anybody online that would like to speak?
No comments online, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Are there any questions for either Deb or Nancy on this item? All right, I'm hearing none. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the application for a special events permit for the Fruta Arts and Culture Board to serve wine during the Coco Vino fundraiser on Friday, March tenth to twenty twenty-three from three to ten P M. At the, at the Sacred Heart Church, D B A Our Lady of Perpetual Motion located at five oh three East Aspen Avenue, subject to the conditions stated by staff.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second. Is there any other comments? All right, hearing none. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Cry.
Hi.
Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Counsel Hancy.
Yes.
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, with that, we're gonna move into our second, uh, public hearing, and it's a modification of a license premise, a request to approve a permanent modification of a license premise of, for Dillon Companies, uh, D B A City Market. And so we've got Deb Woods presenting on this one.
Hey, uh, thank you. This is, uh, an application for a modification of licensed premises on a fermented malt beverage liquor license for Dillon Companies LLC, D B A City Market number thirteen located at one thirty-five South Plum Street. At the November eighth, twenty twenty-two midterm elections in Colorado, Proposition one twenty-five passed by a slim margin to allow wine to be sold for off premises consumption at retail establishments who currently hold a fermented malt beverage off premise liquor license. Uh, this law goes into effect on March first. Uh, on January tenth of twenty twenty-three, a permanent modification for licensed premises on the fermented malt beverage off premises liquor license for the Fruta City Market was filed with the city clerk's office by the law firm of Dill, Dill, Carr, Stonebreaker, and Hutchings, P C. The reason behind the modification of licensed premises is that the Fruta City Market would like to take advantage of the new legislation that will allow them to sell wine in addition to the beer that they sell now. This will require them to expand their alcohol beverage storage and display areas from a total of twenty linear feet to a total of forty-six linear feet. The diagrams in your council packet note where there, those areas are proposed to be located. A notice of public hearing poster was posted at City Market on February eighth, and notice was posted in the Daily Sentinel on February eleventh for this public hearing tonight. Fruta Chief of Police Dave Kraus reviewed City Market's application and provided his statement that there is nothing which would prohibit the change in licensing as required, as requested. It is staff's recommendation that the council by motion approve the permanent modification of a licensed premise on a fermented malt beverage off premises liquor license for Dillon Companies LLC, D B A City Market number thirteen located at one thirty-five South Plum. And Brenda Rowe with the law firm of Dill, Dill, Carr, et al. Is present with us virtually tonight, so I will turn it over to her for any additional comments she may have.
Good evening. Can you folks hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
I'm sorry, I'm not Brenda Rowe. She's my wonderful paralegal. Uh, you probably like to see her rather than me. My name is Adam Stapen, S T A P E N. I'm a partner with the law firm Dillon, Dill, that filed the application on behalf of Dillon Companies in the City Market in your backyard. My registration number is two seven five zero six. Um, I can open it up and kind of give an explanation of what we're doing and why. I think it's pretty self-explanatory that we are looking to expand the permanent display of alcohol in the store. We're not looking to expand the city market footprint. We're not looking to change or alter the ingress or egress. We're not looking to license any outside area, nor more importantly, are we looking to change the character of this establishment of your community. It is and always will remain, should you grant this modification, a grocery store. And if you look at what we're trying to do, we're trying to expand out the permanent display by twenty-six linear feet. The overall footprint of the licensed premise is about thirty-eight thousand square feet. So this is very minimal in the context of the character and how this will affect your backyard. Um, as the city clerk said, commencing March first, twenty twenty-three, we will be allowed to have wine in this store irrespective of this application. The state allows the temporary modifications to occur. This is an automatic conversion, which allows us to sell not only permitted malt beverage, which is beer, and now wine. Um, so commencing March first, all stores across the state of Colorado will have the ability to sell wine. What we're asking you to do tonight, uh, mayor and members of the authority, is to approve a permanent modi, a permanent modification where we're not required to move product around after so many thirty, forty days, whatever it may be, that we permanently have an ability to put the wine at this location. I can tell you, Dillon Companies, it was strongly in support of this, as you might imagine. They take this very seriously. All of the training remains the same. You know, there's heightened security through potentially added security cameras, retraining the staff. Everyone understands this is an important addition to the existing license, and we still want to remain a good purpose citizen in your backyard. If you have any questions with me, I'd be happy to answer any of those. I believe we also have Teresa Beetz maybe joining me as well. She is the adult beverage specialist for Dillon Companies here in Colorado, and she's kind of head of implementing the alcohol change to not allow the, the wine in these locations. But, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the authority, we're an open book. Any questions you may have, please fire away.
All right, well, we're gonna open up to public comment first, and then we'll bring it back to council. All right, with that, we're gonna open it up to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity. All right, I'm hearing none. Is there anybody online, Sierra, that would like to speak?
No comments online.
All right, we're gonna close public comment and bring it back to council. Are there any questions or comments that council has on this item? All right, hearing none. Then do we have a motion?
I move, we approve the permanent modification of licensed premise on a fermented malt beverage, F M B off premise, and wine retailer after March first, twenty twenty-three for Dillon Companies LLC, D B A City Market number thirteen located at one thirty-five South Plum for an increase of the retail display from twenty linear feet to forty-six linear feet.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other comments? Hearing none. Uh, W, please poll council.
Counsel Cry.
Hi.
Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Counsel Hancy.
Yes.
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, well, thank you for being here tonight.
No, thank you so much for your time. You folks have a wonderful night.
Thank you. All right, with that, we do not have any legislative hearings or anything on our administrative agenda, so we're gonna move into our city manager's report.
All right, thank you, uh, mayor, members of council. First, I'd like to recognize a few people in the audience. We have, uh, a number of students from my public administration class at C M U. So we have Kendall, Jimmy, Katie, Trevor, and Taylor. So welcome you. Thanks, uh, thanks for being here tonight. Um, you're making up the majority of our audience, uh, tonight, this meeting. Uh, uh, first of the updates, I just wanted to let you all know, I had the opportunity, uh, to participate with the District Fifty-One, uh, hiring panel for the assistant superintendent last Friday, and that was a, a good experience that, uh, it was, it was myself, someone from C M U, and then a, a large amount of the administration at uh, the district, and they had some great candidates. So exciting, uh, for them to hopefully be able to fill that position, uh, in the future. And then, uh, today was our first, uh, day, official workday of the new building department. So they were busy, um, had a great day, um, but hit the ground running. Now, we already have people coming in and, and, uh, starting projects, so, uh, that's an exciting, uh, moment for us. And then this Thursday, I'll be attending the Saint Mary's, uh, their second community, uh, quarterly partnership, uh, meeting. And then, uh, on February, or sorry, our February workshop, a week from tonight, we have two items for sure on the agenda. One is the guest speaker that, uh, that Mayor Pro Tem Bremen, uh, uh, was able to set up, and that's the executive director for United Way and discussing uh, those ti, those services, um, that are provided, the two-one-one service and other, other additional services throughout the valley. Um, I think we're estimating about a thirty-minute or so discussion there. And then we will have an overview of our mountain water properties and rights. So at that workshop, I know that was one thing we wanted to. Um, so this won't be necessarily any decision-making, but just an overview of what we have up there as far as properties, water rights, um, what some of the challenges are that we're working on, just to kind of put that into context. So, um, think the last City Link article, but getting into some detail, um, around that, which that could be around thirty, forty-five minutes or so, uh, that we're looking at. The reason why I bring that up is, um, wanted to get an indication from you all. If you wanna stick to those two, is that enough for a, a workshop night? Or do you want to jump into, uh, the first part of our discussion with boards and commissions where we could um, essentially come and just give a quick overview. We put some information out ahead of time in the packet, so you could look over it, but an overview of what has, what means has created each board and commission and what the purpose of each board and commission is. Um, and then we could have a, a general discussion of all of those, um, a discussion of roles of staff and council liaisons, um, because that's something that we've had on the list to discuss. And then, and then we could kind of probably wrap it up, but end with more of a schedule of which ones we need to then hone in on in future discussions, you know, which boards and commissions we want to talk about. Um, in light of the recent requests from, we have a couple that are kind of looking for some direction as the next phase of, of their, their purpose, and so we could identify that workshop, kind of the schedule of, of, of the top, of which ones we'd be working on. So is that something you'd want to add to those two items that night? Or would you rather talk about that at a, at a, at a, another workshop in the future?
I think we've got time at that one.
I'd love to add it myself.
Uh, and keep in mind, if, if we add it and the first two go much longer, you can always say, we'll continue and, and add, and have this discussion at a future one, but, but I, I can't think of anything else that, that's pressing for that workshop, so that'd be a good time if we want to go ahead and get started.
Got a lighter.
And I like the idea of the overview and, and then talk about future.
Yeah.
Five level conversation.
Great. Perfect. Um, and then, uh, one thing we talked about doing at these meetings is just kind of mentioning some of the events coming up. So I just wanted to do a quick rundown of those, and so you can be thinking or let us know if you're planning, and I know some of you already have, but, um, the next one, uh, that we talked about already is the Arts and Culture Board, Coco Vino on March tenth. Um, so that's more of a fundraiser, uh, but it's great to have city council, uh, presence there. Um, so that's the next kind of big event coming up. Then we have the Chamber Annual Banquet on April fifteenth for that. Uh, um, because of our, uh, financial support of the Chamber of Commerce, we have a, a table. Um, so we just need to know if, if you or a guest plan to come and sit at that table. Um, if you want, just, uh, as with any of these, just email Deb and I. It's always a great way to go. And then, uh, um, then, uh, we have the economics summit.
One at a time, that way.
Yeah, you wanna, sure.
You wanna know?
So Coco Vino, um, I'll be, I'll be buying tickets, and I'll be for sure, so.
Yep, I'm, I'm there.
When is Coco Vino?
March tenth.
March tenth.
On your attitude.
Okay. All right, so we have Amy, uh, Janine, Joel, Matthew. All right, great.
Chamber banquet. Hopefully it's more.
I will be there.
I'll be there too.
I will definitely be there.
So if I understood that correctly, there's a plus one that you can do on that? Yeah, then I, I'll be there.
Okay.
And Sam will be there.
Same. Not me and Sam, me and.
I'll be there, Mike, but I won't be.
There was Sam.
Wherever Sam is, that's where.
Okay.
She's there.
There's a plus one.
Oh, yeah, we.
Just be me.
Yeah.
You sit on my lap.
I think they'll, they'll make space for as many as we, we have. All right, so I have, uh, Matthew, Joel, James, Janine, Amy, Aaron.
What was the date of that again?
April fifteenth.
Axe Day.
Hit like the.
Okay.
Oh, that's right.
And then the G Jep Summit, we, we know, we already have Joel, Matthew, and Amy. Are there any others? And that is April twenty-seventh.
Add me, please.
All right, Janine and Ken, or sorry.
That is.
Aaron.
All right. All right, I'm one event behind. Can you put me down for the other one?
Yes, yes.
The fifteenth, yeah, the chamber with a plus one.
Okay.
And what's the next event? Sorry.
The next one is the G Jep Economics Summit. It's April twenty-seventh.
It's there or something.
Thursday. Thursday.
That's all day, right?
Seven to two, or seven to two, I think.
Yeah, it gets over at two o'clock, I believe. Seven thirty.
Skip it.
Seven to two, okay. All right.
All right, great. Put me down. I'll do a tentative on it.
There's also with that one, there's, there's two registrations. There's a kind of all day or the, the full time, or there's just showing up for the lunch with, that has the keynote speaker and not going to like the morning meetings or sessions after. So those are options as well.
The breakout.
So. All right, and then the big one is C M L. Just sent that out today, so I know you might need to think about it. Um, but that is June twenty-fifth to the twenty-eighth, and that's the Colorado Municipal League Annual Conference. And that is at the, I'm forgetting the name all of a sudden.
Gaylord, something.
Yes. All right. Uh, it's in Aurora.
In Aurora. Yep. Me.
Okay.
I have to think about it.
Okay. You still have time to think, so if you, if you need to look at schedules, just let us know. We can get you registered. Um, this is one often, you know, you can, uh, you can bring family along. They might not want to go to the conference, but of course they can come along with you, stay with you.
This one isn't fall on the, the regular days, right? It's a little different.
It's a Sunday through a Wednesday. Yeah.
We have a meeting scheduled that we'll need to.
I don't know if they put the agenda out just yet. They haven't yet the agenda, so.
I mean, the meeting.
Yeah, because if it's Sunday to Wednesday, we're gonna have a council.
Yeah, so, so that was the next piece is, um, no, that's, it's perfect. Um, so that would, uh, this one, we've typically, uh, sometimes we have canceled a council meeting because we have enough going to that conference that we'd have to leave on Tuesday for the Wednesday morning. This one, it would be right in the middle of it. And it would normally be a workshop night, um, the, for June, and we just have to, we could definitely cancel that. We just, well, and we'll just work around scheduling, you know, we might have to schedule a, uh, like a hour workshop before a meeting or something if we have something pressing, but, um, so that would be something I ask of you to consider tonight. If, if it sounds like we have at least three or four going, so.
Go ahead and put me down for it.
So we may want to go ahead and, uh, you might want to consider canceling that, and then we'll take it off the calendar, that workshop.
Also, if we need to, we could schedule a meeting for Thursday or something else. If we had enough agenda, that'd be the.
It's like.
Yeah.
Sunday, Monday two.
And it's a workshop night, so we can, we can arrange it, um, and bring up in future meetings leading up to it if we need to schedule something special.
Do we need a motion for that?
If you, if you're gonna cancel that, that would be good.
We can cancel it now.
Yeah.
May as well, because, yeah.
Yeah. Do we have a motion then?
That sounded like a motion.
Yeah, Matthew sounded like he was creating a motion.
Yeah, I didn't write down the date.
It is a June twenty-seventh.
Dude. So I said, we canceled the workshop on June twenty-seventh.
Okay.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel Miller.
Oh, yes.
Counsel Hancy.
Yes.
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Perser. Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Cry.
Hi.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, I don't have any other updates tonight. Thanks.
All right, with that, we're gonna move into our council reports and actions. Um, so we're gonna go through those, then we'll move into our executive session. So we'll start on my left with Aaron.
Nothing.
All right, Amy?
Girls win fifty-nine fifty-five. Um, I think the only other thing I had was I attended the, uh, meeting great for the building department, and it went really well. We had an awesome turnout, and it was very positive, so. It was good. Janine was there as well. Yeah, it was a good event.
Yeah.
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 I am out of town next week, uh, so I can't go to the G R V T C meeting, uh, Kimberly's covering for me. Thank you. Um, I also won't be here for the workshop. There's a possibility I could call in.
Okay.
Um, one of the things that, I mean, somebody is reaching out to me about a proclamation that we might want to renew. I, we can just talk about it at that workshop, just to see if we're interested in rescheduling it, uh, anyway.
Was that not on the list of all the other proclamations?
I don't know. Was it on the list of proclamation for which one it was? Is the inclusivity.
That's right. That's right.
Is that on our?
Updating it, updating the one we've done in the past, I think is.
Just to.
We don't do that annually, I don't think. Is that when we do annually? No.
No.
Then at once.
Right.
So.
The idea is.
We reached out and asked if we would.
Say it again.
So, we can talk about it at the workshop that I'm, that I'm, that I'm not gonna be at.
I, I will not be there either.
Yeah, I, I think for the workshop, we, we may need to just kind of do it, and if, if that's possible, if, if the two of you are able to, I'm not saying you have, but we could, we could set it up this way where you could be virtual and have that discussion, so.
Well, my other question would be to council, do we need, can we just vote on that one tonight? Or do you want to wait through the workshop?
You need to wait or you need to vote.
Right, that's what I'm saying. If, if we.
I, I'm all in favor for it, but I wrote it.
Right.
If you want the same one as you did two years ago. Yeah, we did it right after the Nazi flag thing.
A while ago.
Yeah. I'll just do it. We have my vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, looks like, yeah, we're good with adding that.
Okay, great.
Then you have somebody that's gonna be here for that.
Yeah, I'll reach out to him and see when they.
When they can make it.
And they can make it, and then we'll just get it.
Perfect.
Okay, thanks. But I will try to, uh, log in next week. I, I don't know my schedule. I'm at a conference, and all the big bosses will be there, so.
That's why you're there, right?
That's, yeah. But, but I'll try.
Okay.
All right, is that it? That's it. Sorry. All right, that's all right. James?
Um, I have tourism in the morning, which is nice, because they haven't, they haven't had any. I missed the last one, and we hadn't had one for a couple of months, so it's nice to have that. Um, and just outside of that, I finished the lineup for Fall Fest already.
Oh, nice.
Because some people give me enough time. Now, and you guys will be happy to know, even though the budget went down, I was able to get Hazel Miller as our headliner this year, so it'll be a lot of fun.
Yeah.
And that's it for me today.
Uh, we had our Arts and Culture Board meeting in the dark. That was when the, um, the power went out, and we had alarms going off the entire time we were in there with emergency lights, but we had it. We stayed in, um, to get ready for Coco Vino, which, um, you all know about and have heard about, and that was really the main topic there. We had, uh, the livid, livid. We had the livability commission meeting last Thursday. And they're working on trying to hone in on some new things, like they've accomplished their original goals. And they're, they're one of the boards that could benefit from our discussions for sure, but in the meantime, they're also doing a good job at. Like picking up two or three things that they are interested in bringing to us to possibly pursue, so. And that's, and then we canceled, postponed the Downtown Advisory Board because of the roads and weather. And so that will be taking place tomorrow instead, so that's all I have in that regard. Um, I do have just a clarification action item. I asked Mike and Dan about it today and Mike got back to me. I may be the only one under this misimpression, but I had thought when we were talking about the parking. At the Mulberry Plaza that we were good with the two on the south side, but had decided it was gonna be difficult to have the two on the north side. Cuz of backing up and things like that. And that's not.
Well, I, I did want to clarify, cuz after I emailed that to you. And it was too late to check, so I, I still need to look, but I was gonna go back to the minutes because I was having. A hard time remembering that answer that it's two and two. I couldn't, I just couldn't remember off the top of my head. And the engineering staff were out. Deb was out getting ready to come back early for the meeting, so. I, I worried that I answered the wrong way anyway, because it was hard to remember, so if you all remember, but we can look back on, on the minutes, but.
I'd like clarification. One of the business owners told me that they've been told that there were gonna be those other two on the north side. And that's just not how I recalled it, and they were already unhappy about that. And I was like, oh, I didn't think that that's, it's not how I recalled it, so I just wanted to.
I remember the discussion. I remember we came and said it's going to be difficult from the backing back out.
We were concerned about that interaction with the alley.
I thought there was supposed to be three, and then they said we go to. Yeah, that's what I recalled.
It's possible that we left that meeting. I, I've been trying to think about as well that we left that saying. You, we want as much parking as we can, but if it doesn't work logistically, we were okay eliminated, but yeah. I don't.
I just wanted to be more clear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought I knew and then.
Okay. We'll go back and check the discussion to make sure, but I, I do remember talking about it. But I can't remember what the finality was off the top of my head.
Thank you, I'm sorry, but thanks.
Matthew?
A couple things. I did not make the GJEFF meeting. It was a, called it a snow day. At that morning, but as Mike said, Michael said April twenty seventh is the Economic Summit. The fruit of chamber meeting, it was a lot of discussion around budget. And the balance between events and staffing and programs offered, and that's gonna be an ongoing discussion. And coming up events, we have Women in Business, March ninth. At CMU, it starts at eight AM, and then, as mentioned, April fifteenth is the Chamber Banquet.
Alright, that's it.
Alright. It's for me.
Alright, I didn't have any meetings, but I wanted to bring up the one email I sent out to everybody. Aaron was asking about. The cell numbers that came with the tablets and that they can't use them as a phone number. And so, I didn't know, I use my cellphone for everything I do, but Aaron brought up whether he wanted to have another.
EP was the.
A usable.
If it was, yeah, just.
And so I didn't know if that's open to discussion, if anybody wants to get like, I think it'd be easier to get like a Google number or something if somebody wanted to have two. But I just thought I'd bring that up just cuz I wanna make sure everybody's aware, you know. Those discussions that we're talking about. Other budgetary items, cuz fifteen dollars a line to go through Verizon, to have a second line.
I, I think I've only gotten ever maybe two calls. Probably not your experience. Yeah. I, I guess I'm, I'm counting out people that I would reach out to me. Because Amy made sure I got more calls.
That's okay, we, we are just researching on, cuz there are phone numbers associated with each of the data lines for our iPads.
I would not need one. My number's already up. Same.
I don't need one, but if someone want, if someone wants one, I'm, I support that.
Sure, yes, yeah, yes.
And one thing we noticed was originally, we looked because there was a number tied to those iPads, and so good question, right? Can we just utilize that? Is it something we already have? But there's, there's, I think there's, there's more options to look at, like Google number or something that, you know. But I think the point was, it could still come to the same device, it's just have a separate number, so you don't have to give a particular number out, you know. So, we can.
Some people function differently, so. Mine's more of a transparency thing. If somebody wants to get ahold of me, they, you know, they've got my number. But I was also brought up that one of our counselors didn't have their phone number on any of the newsletters or anything else either. So, that may be another discussion, as what information do you want to have on the newsletters, I think.
Yeah, Counselor O'Brien put email address instead of a phone number on, in the past, and those contact locations on the website or the city link as well.
So if anybody wants to change that, they just have to let Mike know to say, hey, I just want to mail over, if you want your phone, so.
May I chime in for one thing, one thing real quick? Hi. The only thing I would just make sure is, do not, or if you do text anyone or receive texts, remember that is subject to Quora. And so I would discourage making any sort of text communications with members of the public on your phones. Because then, this, if the city gets a request under the Open Records Act, they may need to take your phone and search through those. So I do think, you know, just make sure you're using that separate email for the city. And then limit your phone to only phone calls if you do get contacted.
Okay. Thank you, Mary Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Did you get that, Matthew?
Just thinking, what a nightmare.
That wouldn't be good.
I'm just gonna be quiet and contemplate for a little.
Probably the same thing with Facebook.
Well, I'm not worried about that. Where it gets messy is, you know, text with, let's say, county commissioners. You know. It may all be non-city related, but I'm assuming that's still open to Quora. So.
Anytime, anytime you are communicating as a city council member. Or then you are, that communication is subject to Quora unless for some reason it's covered. You know, if you're communicating with me, that's obviously not, but that's pretty much gonna be it.
But I think in this instance, Matt is having personal.
Yeah, I've, I've have.
Yeah, it's not as a counselor.
Right, so if it's not as a council member, yeah, if it's not as a council member, that's completely, that's not, but that's where things get. It's just, it's hard to, you know, unravel that. When you are using one point of contact for both, does that make sense? So, that, I mean, that would be, you know, as long as you're not texting anybody as a council member. You know, that makes that pretty easy, but I just caution you if you start to, start to do that, cuz it's, then makes it difficult.
And the flip side's for county commissioner.
It's still. You know.
Joy.
Mary Elizabeth, is it, is it safe to say, I mean, while it becomes difficult to separate depending on what device? And, you know, those types of things, it's the nature of the communication, right? So like, when you say as a city council member, it's, you're, you're discussing city business. So, even if you had a personal phone and a work phone, if you did, if you discuss city business on the personal. That's subject to Quora. It's not, it's not about the device, it's about the nature, the subject matter and, and of the communication, so.
That, that's, that's exactly, sorry.
It can get more difficult to separate if called out, that's.
And I respect that, but you know, there may be a certain state legislature, we've been going back and forth about coffee makers for the past two weeks.
Not city business.
Not city. As close as it gets is I have coffee before council meeting.
So do I.
So I guess that'd be the other question. I mean, yeah, the, the, most of us, I think, because we have relationships in the community. Everybody's used to having our certain contacts. And so I think that makes it hard to say, okay, I'm gonna have two devices, because people are still gonna contact you probably through the wrong device. But I guess that would be one where you'd have to redirect them, correct, Mary Elizabeth?
That's what I would suggest. If you do have a designated city council business device. Then I would just start direct, if it's city, you know, if it's city business, start directing folks to utilize that. Cuz that just makes it much easier if there is an instance where we need to respond to a Quora request. Then it's all in one place.
Well, the other question I'll ask though, because like email is kept on a separate server, cuz I had access to email on my phone, my tablet, my computer. So it's not a matter of the device at that point, it's a matter of the, the main hosting server for that.
Right, so email's much easier, because as long as you're using the city email address, that's all getting stored, you know, on the city server. Text, though, will only be on the device from which they were sent.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to start confusing the issue, I just.
Good to keep us in line once in a while. Any other questions related to this? Well, we've got Mary Elizabeth's attention, we, you know.
I, I have not a lot, but I have had message requests on Facebook because. That's who, where everybody directs my name, so I just need to respond to that with, please. Contact me at this email address.
Right, because that email address is public, it's already up on the city's website, you know, so it's not like, you know, I obviously would advise you. Well, you shouldn't be using your personal address, so you just give them that city address and just say, please direct any questions or correspondence here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Steph, for researching that.
Yeah, yeah.
The part is, I just went on the Messenger on this, and I forgot there's text messages for whoever had this number before. Of people I do not recognize. So, and pictures of some sporting event, which I was never.
God, my heart skipped a beat there when you said some pictures. I was like.
Alright, with that, we're getting off topic. So that's all I have for my council reports and actions, so.
Hey, Mayor, sorry to interrupt. Ciara was able to look up the minutes and did find in the minutes that we went from, originally. We had talked about having, so originally there were gonna be three, sorry, with Mulberry, the Mulberry space. We originally had three spaces on the north side, three spaces on the south side, and we came and we had a discussion about some of the, I think. Engineering put some things up about the turns and we discussed that. And the minutes show that we ended with two and two, so two on the north and two on, on the south to give enough room. But I do remember I was talking about the north side where it's, it's gonna, that would, it's gonna be awkward. Cuz you're driving straight in and then you've got to back straight out. But that did kind of help me remember that discussion where there was discussion of, well, you can, you can back out into the alley. Or you can back out into, towards the parking lot to get out of there, but obviously that is not too late to change. If that's something this group wants to change, I think the south side might be too late to change, as those are in, but, but the north side. The plan, the plan is still, and that's what they're, I, I would assume that's what they're working on, or not assume, but I'm sure they're working on that. If that's what we had in, in the minutes, it's two on the north. Thanks, thanks Ciara for looking it up already.
Alright, thank you. Any other last minute before we move into executive session?
With what Mike just said, do we want to have any more conversation about that or not really?
It's up to you guys, if you wanna have more conversation.
My thought is, if it work out, no on the north side, and if it's something that we want to add, is it something that we could add later? Because if it's just painting stripes, and it's not part of the design, it's just if we designate it a parking spot or not. Because I. Towards, I wasn't part of those discussions, but I'd be leaning more towards no on the north than.
What was the feedback you got from people today?
Yeah, that'd be.
Wow, that's gonna be horrible. There's gonna be, the bikes are, people on the bikes, the bike racks are gonna be right there. And then people are gonna be trying to back out, and you can't back out to the alley, all of the things. I mean, I didn't, she just brought it to me, but it was all the things that we had talked about in our discussion. And also the idea of eating up more of that space with the awareness that the city, that we're actively trying to find a bigger. Parking solution. Anyways, yeah.
I think that was part of the discussion was trying to get as many spots as we could.
Sometimes we're losing six spots, eight spots, how many could we back up?
Yes, for sure.
I, I wonder if making them back in spots could alleviate some of that.
Sorry, say that again.
Making them back in spots, sort of like. Did they try, did they fix it?
No, yeah, they fixed it, you pull in forward now.
I don't, I just, I don't, I just wanted to bring up the.
When they engineered it to have those two spots, they felt like they were confident that it would work that way, though, didn't they?
I think it was, there, there's gonna be, they're gonna be, I know when there were three, we talked about five point turns. Two, there still could be, maybe it's not fully five point, but four, so it's, it's, it's definitely not gonna be a, like you normally pull in and just curve right out. You're gonna kind of have to, does that make sense? Point turns where you're gonna go a little bit, a little bit more. And I think that's what, probably to the feedback what you're hearing, is there are bike racks in that vicinity. So there's going to be, and just people walking from the parking lot to that area, so. You know, it's just gonna be, it, it, it can work, it just is an opportunity for some potential conflicts, but.
See how it goes, and if it, like, it's something we can always take away, like, removing the lines is not gonna be that.
Right.
There's things that would have to be.
Yeah, I'd have to double check.
Double check to see where we're at in the process.
Yeah, cuz I can't, I, I'd have to double check, cuz I, I believe it was bringing it into the space a little bit, so you probably have some curb and gutter. Yeah, if you could share it, thank, thank you. I just need to look at Ciara, she's on top of it and ahead of us, Steph.
Those are within.
They're within.
Buildings.
So it's not just on the, yeah, on the street. I mean, on the street where the street's ending now, it's coming into the space.
The idea would be you'd be backing out into the alley on that side, or in backing out in, backing up into the parking lot. And then coming forward.
But the way all the engineering has been done so far, depending on where the process is, like Matthew said, you know. There may be. Not the opportunity to change where all that infrastructure is.
Right, that's, I don't know.
Add extra tables or anything else in that space down the road.
Or you make it more bike parking or something.
I mean, my opinion is keep the parking, cuz I think that was the biggest discussion was.
For sure, and.
And if it is an issue, then.
Yeah.
You know, that, that would be where I'm coming from, is, you know, yeah, let's, let's try it, see how it goes, but.
Yeah, I.
Do we have, do we ask Mike to see where it is, if it's too late to change from the designs that have been submitted? And then talk about it one last time and.
See, my deal is, if we know we have a deadline, we change that, then you can't.
Right, oh, yeah.
I get.
Keep the engineering the way it is, then you can always add or remove spaces based on painting.
It's just do you paint it or not, like those type of, those are good questions. I think that'd be good to know is, where is it in the process? And ultimately, yeah, not changing the.
Being friendly, waving hi.
I'm just gonna jump in here. I, I would suggest if the council and mayor, if you guys want to discuss this further in depth. I would prefer you put it on either a workshop or city council agenda as a standalone item. Just as this is, you know, this is now being discussed under council reports, and it's getting pretty far away from just reporting on something. And more into. The nuts and bolts of what's happening out there.
But it would be appropriate to ask them just for an update as to where they are in the process.
And then put it on next, and put it on workshop.
Yeah.
That'd be a ten minute discussion. Yeah, that sounds good.
And I threw that out there, I, I, not giving direction to staff.
If that. I like that.
Alright, I'm gonna say one more time, anything else before we move into executive session? I'll call you Ken. All right, with that, we're gonna move into executive session. We've got, our next item is to convene an executive session for determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators pursuant to C R S section twenty four six four oh two four E. With regard to agreement with the Yoot Water Conservancy District and receiving legal advice from the city attorney pursuant to C R S section twenty four six four oh two four B regarding the same. So we need a motion on that one.
Mayor, I moved to meet in the executive session determining positions. Relative to the matters that may be subjects to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators pursuant to C R S section twenty four six four oh two four E. With regard to agreement with the Yoot Water Conservatory District and receiving legal advice from the city attorney pursuant to C R S section twenty four six two oh, four oh two four B regarding the same.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel Hansi?
Yes.
Counsel Bremen?
Yes.
Counsel Perser?
Yes.
Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Counsel Cry?
Hi.
Counsel Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, with that, we'll take a, probably a five minute break and then move into executive session. All right, thanks.
So I'm gonna leave and I'm gonna come back in to the executive session Zoom, which is different.
You guys hear that? Is there something?